I have four needles. So I need my own copy. Oh, great. Got everything all mixed up. Thank you.
I'm missing our special minutes. Did I? I'm missing our special minutes.
I'm working off at this set. Is there a difference between our original set and this?
Yeah. That's my suggestions. I wrote it out.
Okay.
Wait, what did you just hand us out? I just mixed it up.
No, no, you didn't, because I stapled it.
I stapled all mine, too, though.
Well, it says-
Hers are highlighted in this, in yellow.
Okay, got it. This is the second one down.
These are her.
This looks like-
This is my suggestions summary. What it should be.
Okay, I got it.
Because I know we've been working on this, so hang on. I will be official two minutes after.
Okay, thank you.
There. Two minutes after five, call the meeting to order. Oh, listen.
He's not coming. He's at work.
Oh, okay. All right. So we are, we're going to call the meeting to order as soon as I can find my, I'm going to steal yours. No, that's the one.
Do you need an agenda? We can go grab one from up there at the-
Let me get, no, no, that's, that's good. I'm doing the same thing we always do.
Yeah. Civil reflection, pledge of allegiance.
Yep. I see a person in the gallery. Thank you. Okay, 5:02, roll call.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Ms. Butler-Challander, here. Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Benzie?
Here.
Ms. Kellerman?
Here.
Mr. Phyllis Bliss?
Here.
Mr. Rosecraans out this evening?
Okay. Okay. Civil reflections, we'll do the pledge of allegiance in the moment of silence. Yes, I do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have an approval of the agenda.
Comment? Oh.
You can do that before-
It makes a big deal, but it wasn't the order that I suggested it in, and I kind of have a suspicion that the rules of order are going to take a long time, and the other ones are really short. So could we flip them around? Does anybody care? I would like, office security can be a minute, maybe. If that doesn't-
All right, so what you want to do is put the board meeting rules at C, and then move everything up?
Yeah.
Okay.
If that works with anybody else, just-
So you want office security A?
Office security A, and then with the other two makes, well, I think the, the rules of order are going to be the slowest, and if we don't get through them, we could put them last. Does that make sense to people?
That makes sense to me, so-
Okay.
In other words, so again, we're going to have office securities A? Is that how you're going to do it? Okay.
And then B is B and A is C?
Yep. Okay, is there any other changes in this agenda? All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Benzie?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Phyllis Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander? Yes, Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, conflict of interest? Doesn't appear to be any. Public statement one. Thank you.
Good afternoon. There's a couple of things that I'm concerned with on the agenda. The lack of accountability of this board is amplified by removing and striking any public questions. It has been stricken in three, three or four different spaces in the rewriting of the minutes. Now, once again, not to continue to belabor this, but I authored the original minutes, and there are reasons for that. And there's a lot of things that are stricken out that you probably don't even know the backstory on why those things were included. And I'm sure that Karen doesn't know them, because she wasn't here then, Ryan wasn't here then. And I do appreciate that you put in the packet that the original minutes were submitted on June 1st, 1999, which is when I submitted them. So I'd be more than happy if you call on me because you don't know why something was there, then you don't know the whole story, and you don't know why you're striking it. It may seem like it's unneeded, and some of it now is, but some of it has some real reasons on why you should be doing it. But I am extremely concerned that now the public, and some of you ran on, in fact, Trustee Kellerman, right on your campaign sign, it says accountability now. But if we strike out questions from the public, the voters, who are voting for you, who are indirectly paying your salaries, and I know it's not much, but they are paying for it. If you, if you're not willing to answer their questions, I find that to be a travesty, and you should be accountable to the voters. And if you can't answer them that night at the meeting, that's not the end of the world. If you don't have an answer, you can always say to them, I'll look into that and I'll get back for you. That's what I always did when I was on the meeting. But it seems like there is a certain contempt for the public, and that's pretty shameful. The other thing that I wanted to touch on real quick, because I know I'm over my time limit, is why is Marie not back in her office? I hope you want to address that.
All right, thank you, Rick. So apparently we're under our new business, which our first item is going to be office security.
You brought all kinds of stuff for interesting costs. This is for keys in all of-
It's not for, it's not, it's for key, a keyless access system for the entire township, but it does not contain an estimate for cameras, security cameras. So I had indicated to you that I believe that that would be available by today, and it wasn't available today from the vendor to one of our staff members. So I don't have that cost for you at this time. But the, the proposal in your packet from KVO Communications is for the access control, and it's, it's built out by building, so you'll see the fire station, the police station, the township hall, DPW, and so on.
Can I ask a question about, I'm trying to understand, is this, does the information then get fed into a computer so that, like, if I snuck in here at 3:00 in the morning and it caught fire at 3:01, you would know that-
You accessed the building at that time? Yes, that's, that's correct.
That's good. Okay, great. That's excellent.
Quick question. My concern with the office security is the fact we didn't have comparative bids.
We do have comparative bids.
But we didn't see them.
No, you did not. So if you'd like to see those, actually, they're much higher in cost. So I will bring those to you, but this was the preferred vendor.
Who is the vendor?
KVO Communications.
I'm sorry, who?
KVO.
KVO, it's in your packet. Yep.
So where does this computer live that this talks to? One central hub for all the buildings?
It, we, that hasn't been determined yet. Who would be the administrator of that program? There may be a couple of different administrators. So it's possible that it would be, and I specifically, I don't know if there's just one computer, but it would have remote access. So if we had someone from the police department be an administrator, and then someone from township staff be an administrator.
Yeah, probably you'd almost need to, if a building burnt down, you'd lose everything that you tried to-
Yeah.
Okay, sure. That's great.
Yeah.
And do we have, I asked this of somebody, and I didn't get the, the answer didn't make sense. Is there a generator that runs, if we have power outage, do we have a backup system?
So we used to lease one from Mr. Wisner, Wisner Electric, and we no longer, ours is being implemented in 2024. So we won't have to continue to do that, but we do have access to a generator.
But it's not here and there?
But we, we're making the preparations for the one, but generators, because of something to do with COVID, they're on back order, so we're still waiting for the generator we ordered to come in. In the meantime, we do have other generators, and we've outfitted additional buildings so that the senior center, because of the food storage, the BCC, because it's a precinct, they, they also have access, we have purchased those generators, but they're much smaller generators, because they only need to do a little bit at a time. They don't need to make the whole building run.
Like, the police station being without power would be a disaster.
Yeah, the one we purchased for the township and the PD is a much larger, it involved us installing another unit from consumers and doing some special wiring. But yes, it would keep us up and running during, during an emergency, whether that be a storm or otherwise.
Yeah, it could be terrible.
You're basically looking at the ARPA funds, then, for all the security?
ARPA funds or general fund, fund balance.
Okay. No, I, I would appreciate seeing the, the bids, because usually bids are open with us. I didn't realize.
They're not. Usually they're open with me. I'm the one that has the authority to open bids if there's, if there's an open bid process. In this case, the pricing was low enough that it did not require going out for-
Good lord, what's our threshold?
I think it's 30 or more.
How do you tell it's quality? This has got to be just-
30 or more thousand?
Yeah, but-
This was 160.
I understand that total, but if we were going to, just to get prices for the board, if you decided to implement this in its entirety, yes, we would have to get bids. But if you picked and chose-
Whoa, wait a minute. You mean you would take his, his figures and then go to somebody else?
We would have an open bid process.
Because everybody would know what that bid would be?
Well, they'll know what the other ones are, too, once you see them, so.
Once you see them, but not when they give them. That's what a competitive bid does, isn't it? Am I misunderstanding that? A competitive bid, to me, understands that you put something in secret, you submit it, and then it's opened altogether.
But generally, you're initiating specifications. So you would be having, you would say, fire station, this is what we're looking for. Township hall, this is what we're looking for. So we would offer those specifications, and then we could take bids.
Oh, because you said the whole complex. I, I didn't understand you were breaking it down.
But you can pick and choose. Like, if you just chose to do the police station and the township right now, you could do those.
Oh, so it's not the whole township. You're just looking at-
No, I'm saying you can.
Well, yeah, you can, but you're looking- But you haven't broken down, so, for example, we would do this building, period.
Well, we could decide how we want it.
You could decide how you wanted to do it. You could do it all, or you could do it bit by bit and implement it over time.
When you do the fobs, who gets them? Because that's a really high bar. I mean, that's, to me, that was pretty expensive. So I had to think about the bobs that you were, so how many?
I don't know exactly how many, but you would have to have one for each employee.
Oh, sure, I understand that. But do you know how many keys we give? Because our chairs of our committees have them, and, you know, others have them. So would they also have?
Everybody'd have to have one to get in, and that would, that would protect the whole facility for, like I said, I come in at 3:00, and 3:01 it catches on fire, you're going to know exactly who did it.
But if I use your fob, you're-
You'd have to, I'd have to give it to you.
Yeah, I know that, but it would have your name on it, that you were here, not me.
It would identify me. Yeah, everybody has, it's all computerized.
No, I have a-
It's all computerized, so that-
I have a different, say, I have a different fob. I'm in the parking wreck.
So in that case, you would have to rely on both the security camera system and the key fob system to see what occurred.
I think that's great. So safe.
Key fobs, that sounds like a lot of key fobs. That's, that's where I'm wondering if the expense-
Well, we have a lot of keys.
It's a lot of the expense part.
Yeah, we do have a lot of keys, and we really don't know where all those keys are at.
We do now, actually.
And they're given away to somebody.
We will with this.
You will with this, no question. But I guess that's my question with it. Is it necessary, because it said remotely? So in other words, if I had a fob, and I'm here in the office, and I have a 6 o'clock committee, could I open that door, or would it have to be with the chair opening it, with their fob?
You could open and go, come and go as you wish.
Hang on.
You're locked in.
Thank you. No, but I'm not asking you. I'm asking Superintendent.
So I, I'm not familiar with the inner workings of that, but I can check on that with-
Because it says remote.
Ben and the chief of police, but, so it might be that we have it set up so that it's, the building is unlocked, and then it's locked at the end of the meeting. For example, Dan Hayes has a key for the Park Lake Advisory Board. Mr. Benzie's often here for those meetings.
Correct.
So at the end of the evening, there would be a way in which it would, it would be locked, but I don't know the specifics of that.
You can probably set it up how you wish, each, because the police would have a different-
Well, each person would have a different place they could access.
I think, I think that's all doable.
Oh, no, it's all doable. It's just the expense of it seemed really high.
But that's what's here. That's what their bid is.
That's what their bid, and that's not a competitive bid. That's a bid that it's been put in, so now if we do competitive bids, everybody's going to know. So you actually have picked who you want as a vendor.
We have a preferred, this would be our preferred, but-
But that doesn't mean it's a preferred board. Well, now the board, I'm sure, will agree, but I'm just questioning that, because normally competitive bids are taken when you have such high numbers. Okay, nope. It says, we're not voting on this.
It's a beginning. It's a beginning.
It's just a discussion.
Just a discussion.
So I will bring the other bids back to you, and then I hope to have the camera system for this as well, so that you can see that along with this.
It's a process, Ruth.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's great.
Okay, then our next one would be the responsibility of the board of trustees. That would be B. So those, well, following the agenda, it is six, new business, B. And I didn't make the agenda outside of that.
I had one question of duties, rule, do we make rules, or do we make policy? Do, does the staff make policy? Do we have input? And then I hear micromanaging, if we try to have input sometimes, kind of leaves me a little lost.
On what policies?
The one I'm involved with is a senior center. So I just, the gambling, that we can or cannot have gambling, and they're certainly very upset that they can't play.
Well, that's a state thing. You can't gamble.
No, no, no. There's some rules with, with what you can gamble with. If it's, how do they word that? If it's a chance, it's gambling. If it's not chance, if it's a game of skill, it is legal. It's up to us as a board, as I understand it, because I was just over there talking to people today, that it is the board's decision whether the state allows it, if it's a game of skill, in a certain low amount of money, like 25 bucks or whatever. So our bingo players and our, the, the one at Texas Hold'em is gambling, pure and simple, can't do it. The others are, is it a rule, or is it a policy? What difference does it make, and who decides it?
So under my current statutory responsibilities that are given to me, I can, I am responsible for making decisions to run departments. Certainly, if there is something that you don't agree with as a board, you can bring that forth and can have that discussion and choose to vote on it in a different way.
Okay.
So.
I would like to make a motion that we allow the legal, there's many old folks over there, at least, I don't think there's some people on the board here that have played there, and to disallow any small amount of chance, 5 bucks or whatever it is, to make it more interesting. That's within the state legality. Definitely Texas Hold'em, as I understand from everybody, that that's not legal by anybody's rules. The rest of it, again, I think it's our board's decision if you guys want to allow this or not, and we have to decide it. And there's a lot of, our older folks in our, back in our charter, it's, we're supposed to support the older folks in our community, and they want it. They love it. Why do we need to take it away? Is there a reason? I heard there were some arguments.
So I took it away based on the fact that there were many accusations of cheating of people. Because this is a senior center, anybody should be allowed to play. If you make it play for money, that excludes some people from being able to play. It also excludes, we've had people complain in the past that so-and-so wasn't playing fast enough, or they weren't playing the same way, and so people wanted other people not to be able to play. And with it being a senior center, it seems to me that it should be fair for everyone. Everyone should be able to play, whether they have the financial means or not. So removing that removed a lot. I will indicate to you that I have had zero complaints since the money's been removed regarding cheating, or so-and-so needs to not play, or shouldn't be able to play, I want you to tell them they can't play. Those issues have all but gone away, because we've eliminated the money that's associated with it.
Do we have the same number of people that are enjoying playing the games now?
We did when we had people running the center, because they could pick and choose who played. But the free, people are still doing the free play, I call it free play, with euchre and with, it's my understanding, hand and foot and cribbage.
Bridge?
I don't know if Bridge is playing right now or not.
Let me understand the motion.
I, I-
You can't do that, but go ahead. I know what you're going to say, but-
I'm sorry. I'd like to speak.
Oh, is that, go right ahead.
Thank you. We're in conflict with our own rules, because our own rules say we can't gamble. So I would like to refer this to legal. They've been sitting in these meetings now, listening to all of this, and have them take a look at our township ordinance that denies this, and see if it can be rewritten in such a way-
That's exactly what I was going to say.
That it would allow our seniors to do what they want to do.
Damn right.
And that, that's my suggestion, because we're in conflict with our ordinance. And we need to fix that.
So basically, if I'm understanding what you're saying, because I happen to agree with that, what the motion is the thing I was having a problem with. The motion deals with being able to, for example, if you're going to put it in words, the example would be that you follow state law.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we have to follow state law. And we have choi, we have, as I understand it, we can choose within the state law to go this track or this track. And the state law, as I understand it, Miss Layer, that if it's a game of chance, it's gambling, period. If it's a game of skill, you have this minimal amount of money that you can use. And if somebody's raising cane in there, they got to get booted. Somebody's got to be in there and say, you know, you can't fight in the game. And I understand there was one older fellow that had trouble getting up out of the chair, and that created hassle, because he just couldn't get off the table when he's supposed to leave, because he was crippled. So that was a hassle. But seems like there's a way to work this out, that we can provide a place for people to have fun within the law.
So the motion that you want to make, and I think, obviously, jump in if there's an issue with it.
Look into it.
I'm not saying it correctly, that we as a board would look at the state definition of gambling? Is that how, is that what you, or the state's-
What's legal for us to do, and then, then I think as a board, if it's legal, what do we as a board wish to do with it? That's my problem, is I want us to decide. This discussion.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
I thought we had already assigned staff to research this last meeting.
We did.
So I don't know that we need a motion to tell them to do it again.
Do it again?
I mean, hopefully, they're following up on our instruction.
Yeah.
So despite it being allowable, I didn't feel it necessary to have them be able to play for money.
I think, no, I'm not going to put words in my mouth, so jump in. I think what the superintendent's saying is that she has the authority to make that decision. So therefore, she rules over and above what the state already defines gambling.
The state said you can play. It doesn't say you have to play.
Have to play.
So I'm, my, my theory is that our senior center is not a casino. It should be a place that people enjoy themselves, socialize, have a nutritious meal. But I didn't think it was necessary to add money back into the playing of cards.
Is it my turn?
Your turn.
I'm really interested in fixing this.
Yeah.
So I would like the matter researched by the superintendent and referred to legal to take the no gambling policy and rework it, so we're not in conflict with our own rules.
Yeah, and I understand exactly what you're saying.
And the only way we can really do that, and do it correctly, is to refer it to legal.
No.
No.
No, that's not true.
Now, if legal-
This is my opinion.
No, I understand.
If legal says it's okay, we still have another choice, A or B?
No, I, I still am maintaining, from your statement, now make sure I'm, I'm correct on this, you have the authority, as the superintendent, to override or to object, not override. Override is a little tough, to reject the idea that gambling would be okay. So the fix that you have, she's already stated the fix, if I'm understanding you correctly.
So I'm saying, and I think you and I are almost on the same page, but I'm saying that just because they can play for money, doesn't mean they should play for money.
No, you determined that you have the authority to make that decision, and I think you've made that decision.
I have.
That's, okay. So there is any, trustee, go ahead.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, go ahead.
My understanding, Karen, was that the last meeting, we talked about the cancellation of that booked space at the senior center that was playing certain game. I, I thought staff was going to go back and make the calls to the people that our people in the audience had to determine what the law actually says before we canceled this booking.
So we did cancel the Texas Hold'em booking, because that is considered gambling. You cannot do that unless you have a license by the state.
You're saying you, your team checked into this?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
So they can play euchre, and they can play euchre for money, but I thought it best to keep the money out of the senior center.
That's, that's clear.
As well as bingo.
And my position is, is the people want to do this for their $5, and we're supposed to be here to help provide for our senior citizens and feed them and give them a warm place to be, and they want to play with $5. And if there's a hassle, if somebody's obnoxious, boot them, who's ever running the place. Get them out of there.
So the senior center that's supposed to be for everyone?
If somebody's causing trouble, if I went in there and started raising cane, kick me out.
So if there's, if there's a complaint that you're cheating, I'm just supposed to-
Cheating.
Kick you out?
Well, if it continues on, yeah, I think it's a troublemaker. And we, if, if, even if it was doing something else, it's-
You can't do that. It's a senior center. You can't kick somebody out.
Even if they're, no matter what I do in there, you can't kick me out.
Well, they're taxpayers.
Well, if you're, you're going to kick them out?
If I'm bad enough, yeah.
Okay, hang on one second. The clerk has a position she wants to-
I just want to make a comment.
Okay.
I think it was before COVID, there was a long time that, after the card games or whatever, people had a lot of problems, and they were over here every time that that played for a very long period.
So it wasn't much to do.
You know, they were, they were always complaining about one thing or another, no matter how much they tried to amend or change the rules to please everybody, somebody was complaining. I think that that might be where Karen is. I don't mean to speak for you, but might be where she's coming from.
So in other words, that's during the COVID, but that's all.
It was before COVID. I believe maybe even Dan was still here because he had complaints. So it's been a long time.
That's the majority over there at the senior center has complained about it?
I'm not gonna say, I'm not gonna say the majority, but there was residents that was coming over here making complaints about things that were.
The squeaky wheel always wins. Okay, I gotcha.
I'm not gonna say the majority, so.
No, I gotcha.
So they moved down the road to the.
Go ahead, trustee.
I'm not opposed to talking and voting on this, but I think the motion during this point in this meeting is probably improper. We didn't notice that we were talking about this topic.
Right.
It's not on the agenda. It's not on the items for action.
Well.
I'm not, I'm not saying I'm trying to stop it or I don't agree.
Okay, I, I, I hear you. Let's back up then to say, what is our responsibility? That's where I wanted to say, there's a difference between micromanaging what goes on and having discussion like we're doing now about what we should do, where we want to go. With, this is an example, maybe? Let's call it, call it that.
Yeah, I, I sense your frustration, but I, I think it's a, a lack of understanding at the government and how it's set up.
No, it's not. I would disagree with that.
That's great. May I please finish my thought first?
Absolutely. I'm just saying I disagree with that.
Noted. So we have empowered, we being the board, not us people, people before us, right? Have empowered, no, not the next, it stays until someone changes it. It, it carries over. We've empowered the township superintendent with a certain amount of authority. As she mentioned, if we disagree, like I think you finding the policy unreasonable is a reasonable position, then you bring it to the board. But I, I would hesitate to think that there's any deeper nefarious purpose here or anger or we don't care about seniors. It's just you have a disagreement with the superintendent and maybe we all do and we could vote on that. I just, I, I wanna turn down the temperature a little bit on this issue. I don't, I don't think anybody's doing anything wrong or malicious. I think there's a general dispute in how you two see the role of the senior center. And Cheryl, Sherry, I think you're right. We should talk about it and vote on it. We should put it on the agenda and, and talk that through.
But I happen to agree that responsibility means responsibility. So if this is one issue and someone had asked, well, what are you concerned about? Your responsibilities? Her comment was, I work with the senior center. That's a responsibility.
That's one I know.
So, and that's the one that she knows the best, any more than you know the planning commission.
Yeah, I'm not saying her concern is wrong.
Where the board commission, where Joe works. So those kinds of things, that is a responsibility. So I'm not sure that it's not the right place to discuss it. I think when it talks about the responsibilities, I think she's looking, now I'm only suggesting this, that, that may be looking at the broad picture, not the little picture. So as a trustee or as a board member, it's the broad picture, not the smaller picture. And I think that's part of what the problem that we're running into. And I am talking with my hands, so I will keep them to myself.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, Marie, I didn't say that this wasn't the place to bring it. In fact, I'm arguing it is the place to bring it. But not during a special meeting where it hasn't been posted.
Right, and not maybe this item.
Well, that is posted responsibility. So what is the responsibility of the board of trustees?
Well, we've been talking about training. We asked our superintendent to get bids for training and how we can understand our, our roles better. It was not certainly about should there be gambling at the senior center?
Let's not use this one as a vote, to vote on it now. This is my example. Let's take that motion off. Huh? Withdraw my motion and use that rather than a motion, use it as an example of where I feel we need to put our input in. We need to bring this to the board next time and talk about it. The problems, the issues, how we can solve the issues and serve our seniors, yes. But this is my example, withdraw my motion. But our responsibilities as elected board members, what do we need to do? And all different things, all areas, each depart, each area that everybody has a position in. We need to take responsibility. We were the ones elected.
Yes.
Or we shouldn't be here.
In light of the way that we have structured the township. And if you, if you or any of us feel like we shouldn't have structured this, we should stop the management position that we've set up and the staff structure, again, that's all within our purview. But it feels like we run up against this every meeting. And I've noticed some of your Facebook posts where you're constantly asking the question, who made this decision? Who did the, it's always Karen. It's always, because it's her job, it's what we've entrusted her to do. I'm not saying you have to like that or even agree with it, but that's how it's currently set up. So when I have a question about things on the planning commission or in the township, the first call I always make is to Karen to say, what the hell's going on here? And then I can get the information. And if I'm like, Karen, I don't agree with you on this, we can bring it to the board and we can vote and say, we disagree with you, Karen, here's new policy.
Do we do that?
Sure.
Okay. No, I'm just asking a question.
I'm gonna beat your drum again. We're in conflict with our old ordinance. And we need to fix that.
Which ordinance?
So just kind of add that to your list.
Gambling.
Is it our, is it our rental policy?
What?
Is it our rental policy?
No.
Yes.
Well, it's gambling.
We got rid of gambling for sure because that's, that one was, there was no chance, choice, the Texas Hold'em was.
But I think it's our rental policy says no gambling.
Yes.
So it's not an ordinance, it's a, it's a policy.
It's a policy.
I believe it's on. Where's the other place supervisor?
Well, would that be, if you're talking about the policy dealing with the senior center and the policy dealing with the rental?
Rental policy is the same for every place that we have.
All right, so, oh, all right. So let me understand then, if we have a rental pos, policy, that rental policy falls into the senior center? If I'm renting.
Renting the senior center, renting West Western Park, renting the BCC.
There's no gambling anywhere.
Correct.
Then, yeah, we're in violation. Thank you.
Well, we need to fix that.
Yep, we do. Yes.
But I think we've rectified the known gambling by eliminating the, the one game that was considered gambling.
Well, that's one's no.
Texas Hold'em without a license.
Yeah, with the state.
Or with a license, it's still gambling.
So we should put the state language in it. I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay. I was simply going to offer that it sounds to me like this is coming up for a policy decision at some point in the future as to whether to allow gambling with or without funds as, as the superintendent has decided no money to be exchanged. So we're not doing that even in games of skill. And the question is whether we want to allow the money to be utilized for the games of skill, perhaps at the senior center. I would be happy to review the rental policy and provide suggested language if the alternative is selected at, at a future meeting or whenever this comes before the board. We can certainly do that to address trustee Benzi's comments and also get the issue in front of the board as trustee Kellerman seems to be asking for.
So how do we do that? We just say, sure, go ahead and do it?
We can do that in one of two ways. I have heard that there is a consensus and I can go forward. I don't think I need specific authorization from the board to do that. The superintendent could direct me to do that as well. But we can, we can take the consensus here today and move forward with that.
So a motion is needed, isn't it? A motion that.
She said consensus.
We have consensus.
Okay, so as long as you have consensus, I guess.
Well, I'm, I'm suggesting that because this is already within the purview of our work as township attorney, I don't think that we need specific board action every time.
No, I understand you. I'm just wondering if the board needed to be able to specifically say, to direct the superintendent to do the checking and to hire or to, what do you call that? To engage you and?
And I'm suggesting no, because we already have a pre-existing engagement with the township that serves in our role as township attorney. So again, as the consensus.
You automatically do policy.
I can do that. The superintendent can pick up the phone and say, hey, Lizzie, take a look at this, whatever it is that we need to do. We can certainly work with her office to do that.
No, that sounds reasonable to me.
Makes me happy.
Okay. Is there any other responsibilities that anyone wants to, oh, yes.
So I would offer that I included in the packet for your information, information about Mayor Kosterson and the services they offer as government consultants. Sorry, I got distracted by the audience. And then I also made an inquiry with Lou Bender, who the clerk said she's had the opportunity to hear during training with her role as, as a municipal clerk, excuse me. And I have also had MTA said, of course, they could not provide in-person training, but they do offer some other alternatives. So if there's a consensus for me to move forward and get pricing or anything else from anybody else, like I certainly would do that, but.
The only issue I have with the first two, nothing personal, Lizzie, by any stretch, is that we already contract. So when you contract with someone, usually that contractual agreement between two people means that you will do what I want you to do. I mean, that's what a contract.
So with Mayor Kosterson, we have a scope of services.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. And we pay dearly.
Which doesn't include this.
No, it doesn't. But we have contracted like $33,000 for them to come in and help us out. So I'm a little concerned with that as being able to define for us what our responsibilities would be.
That was for internal controls, I believe you're speaking to?
Oh, no, I understand that.
Okay.
But I'm saying as a group, they are contracted. It's not just specific people.
But it's a specific scope.
But it's a scope. So I have a little concern with that. So when it comes, and MTA already knew they couldn't do that. I do, I do appreciate the fact that they do offer those kinds of things on their website. I think that works. I like what they do. They do, you know, a good job with that. But in this case, I'm not so sure. I don't know that they're trying very hard not to be political with what they do and I greatly appreciate that.
Marie.
But I got two going. Okay, guys.
I'm pointing at him.
Oh, is that what you're? Thank you. I hate this setup. This setup has always been an issue.
Are there people or firms that you would suggest that you would?
No, because I wasn't asked, if I'd asked that tonight, I probably would have had you some, but I didn't realize.
Well, I'm asking you.
I know you are. But no, I didn't realize I was going to, if you want me to check, I can certainly do that.
Well, what I'm saying is you've, you've ruled out the ones that.
Right, that have been suggested.
Which is, again, reasonable. But does that mean we don't do training? Or does that mean there's another set that you would be amenable to?
I would be amenable to another issue. I can bring it back if that's, if that's okay, if that's what you want me to do. I have no problem with that. As an independent coming in and telling a board or working with the board, not telling them, they work with them and work with what they have, what they're supposed to do and how they're supposed to do it. I think there are a number of municipalities out there. Michigan State has them. I have, you know, other contacts in other places. The western side of the state does it. So I'm just thinking, if we're looking, if we're really serious, because you guys don't know, you've been here a long time, Joe. I won't tell them how long, Joe. And you've been here before.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And you've been here before. So, and you've been here a long time, actually, so has a clerk been here a long time. But in that whole avenue of being able to learn what it is you're supposed to do or what you think you already know to do, it would be a little tougher, I think, for getting the, a point across. If it, because if you disagreed with it, for example, it's like, well, I haven't done that in 30 years. So, but that's a point that could be made. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I mean, I would argue that maybe that's a bit unfair to us.
I don't think that's unfair at all.
Well, I, I'll speak for myself. I, I would come to this training with an open mind. I would come to a training from MTA or an attorney or an accountant or anyone you identify with an open mind. I don't, I don't know that my response, Marie, would ever be, I've been here a long time. That's not how I'm gonna do it.
Then I would take the responsibility of getting back with Karen with a list of individuals or corporations that would be willing to work for municipalities. Is that fair? Okay. That sounded like mine, but I don't. Thank you. I'm sorry, Joe, did I cut you off?
No, I'm fine.
You're okay.
I'll raise my hand.
Please do or stand up or do something. Okay. All right, we are on new business C, which would actually be, well, new business six. We're on C, which is the board rules. And before we start board rules, I want to make a quick, quick statement. I handed out, for me, just so you understand, this was examples of what I think the boards would do, the board rules. And what I'm looking at with board rules is updates. Now, I don't know if that's what you're looking, because there's a difference between updating and changing. Just so everybody understands that. So from this standpoint, it's looking at an update of what things should be or shouldn't be. Although there is one that I did add in there, which actually changes a rule back in a way. But part of this, so you understand the numbers here are handwritten, so that you know. I started with a two and it ended up taking, hang on one second, I'll get you. I ended up with twos on all of them, so I put handwritten numbers. They're in the left-hand corner. Lefties do that. Does yours have it?
No.
Yours have all twos?
Mine has no handwritten numbers.
All right, open it up. Left-hand corner.
Mine does.
Left-hand corner. Top, left-hand corner.
Oh, it's stapled.
Nope.
Can't see it past the staple.
Can't see it past the staple. So undo the staple.
Mine does.
Okay. So just so you know that that's what it is, it's a handwritten. Same with the appendix A, so that you can, you know, see that. There are errors in here, but I think you'll get the general idea of where I was coming from. So this suggestion, along with the suggestion that we already have from the, from staff with regards to what our board member rules should be, I just wanted you to know that. Yes.
Can I just clarify? You're saying this is your recommendation for changes?
These are my recommendations. I know that we haven't started. This is, this is nothing but a, a, what do you want to call it? My thoughts, which is what we were introduced with Karen. Go ahead, Karen. I'm sorry.
May I have a copy?
Oh, you didn't get one?
No.
Well, must be I ran out.
Here's Al's, and if you want to make him a copy.
I was gonna say, Al wasn't here. Al will get one.
Do you need this?
Put it in his box.
Yeah, I'll be fine.
We'll put it in his box. So if there's any questions with regards to what this is, please let me know. Because all it is is taking the board rules and doing the same kind of thing with strikeouts and, you know, additions for awards and et cetera. And the fact that we have an appendix, which I also put with it, which we didn't have before. So that's for your certification. Now, the treasurer always keeps really good notes on where we're at. So at what point are we at?
We're at six.
At six. Oh.
Conduct of meetings is where we start today.
Conduct of meetings is where we start today. Yep, right there.
Oh, there we go. What the chair's responsibilities are. Any thoughts with that?
You said we're at six?
Six.
Well, she means number six.
We're at-
Number six.
Number six. So actually, that ends up on page five of the new ones, but that's-
Mine's on four, what Karen put in the packet.
Starts on four.
Well, you're not using what Karen put in the packet.
Yeah, I'm using the packet.
So was there anything that had to do with supervisors, the chair, to conduct the meeting? No, I think that was something clear. All right, 6.2. I'm sorry, you guys don't have a copy of it. This is the recognition, board members wishing to speak. Oh, here's already one mistake, Steve. I told you, I keep looking for them. Shall first obtain the approval of the chair. So we're on 6.2, 6.2. Any changes? Doesn't seem to be. All right, 6.3, disorderly conduct at a meeting. Any changes? Go ahead.
I know there was some recommendations from our legal about this.
What, disorderly conduct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But I know that was also in a confidential memo, so I don't know how best to discuss that.
I didn't get that confidential. Well, never mind. That's coming up, I'm sure.
I sent it to everybody's township email.
I know, you did.
Okay.
Yeah, that works.
Let me just pull that up, please, one moment. I didn't have that in front of me. I will grab that.
Yeah, that's 6.3.
Computer, it's working.
I have a copy. Do you want it?
No, I've got it here. It's just loading up.
Oh, she left it. We need some more chairs.
I got them.
Mom, I'm lucky you can say. You got it? Did you find it?
Yep.
No, he said she wasn't. She's still looking. It's a high chair.
Yeah, it's a high chair.
My exercise for today. Oops.
Uh, thank you for your patience as we got that loaded up on the screen here. The recommendation pertaining to disorderly conduct at meetings was a recommendation to consider what the process would be for accomplishing that, whether it's a member of the public or a member of the board. I know recently we had some discussion about that, shall we say, at a board meeting. And I wanted to point that out as it is an option for you to include in your board rules what the process would be and whether there would be a process for removal of an elected official during a board meeting where that to occur. So it is a process question directed at whether there are members of the public or members of your board.
So we have two.
There would be really two questions there.
Process for the public and elected.
Correct. And I, in that opinion, we discussed, and it is, it is well-known that there are the rules regarding disorderly conduct for members of the public to be removed. It is a very, very high standard because, of course, they have the right to stand here and say a lot of things, as they should. This is the, is a public meeting.
Absolutely.
But of course, it is, is designed under the law to also allow you the right, if there's disruption or significant concern, that the language speaks to incitement of violence or threats, that that certainly would be appropriate to have removal of a member of the public. I don't bring this up because I believe that has happened here, but I want you to be informed. And then related to an elected official being removed, there really aren't very clear guidelines in, in your rules or in the Open Meetings Act. Robert's Rules of Order speak to the idea that you, as a board, again, because we use that as a gap filler, that you as a board can decide what you want your process to be. Do you wish to have a process that specifically says this is how we would remove a member of the board? What should that process look like? Robert's Rules of Order would also, of course, indicate that that should probably be a high standard because we don't want mere disagreements to result in, well, I want you out or I want you out. We want to be clear and each of us have shared expectations about what that would look like. Related to that, the other comment that I made is that we had questions previously about what the point of order objection and I think I used the appeal process would be, because I think that that may often precede a concern about whether we can remove a board member for disorderly conduct. So as discussed at a prior meeting, your rules do not discuss point of order. The Open Meetings Act does not discuss point of order. So again, we look to Robert's Rules of Order, which allows for the point of order objection. It also allows, of course, in that case, so for instance, if trustee Kellerman were to call point of order, first step is that the chair says yes or no to continue. And the second step is if they decide they would like to push the issue. So if trustee Kellerman were to say, I'd like to appeal that decision or I'm still requesting point of order, that Robert's Rules of Order says the board gets to decide whether that individual gets to continue to speak. We have been through that process and we followed in that, in that instance, Robert's rules. But if we are here to discuss what your board rules are, you can decide what you want that process to be. So three issues.
Three issues.
Does that make sense?
It does, but I have a question with one of them in particular.
Please.
When you talk about the appeal part of it, does that mean that if we changed our disorderly conduct at a meeting and didn't follow Robert's rules, that meant we would call a recess for however long it would take? So it could take a couple hours or less to make it an appeal process. I'm not sure. Or are you looking at an appeal process after the fact?
So when I use that word appeal, I was speaking specifically to the point of order objection that was being raised. I bring it up in the context of the disorderly conduct rule because I think that's the closest thing in your existing rules to get there. It doesn't need to be part of that rule. So when I say to appeal, we're only talking about the, the point of order. Again, my example, trustee Kellerman says, point of order, I want to speak on this issue or whatever the example may be. And if you, Madam Chair, say, I don't wish to hear from you right now, we've already heard you. She would have the right, under Robert's Rules of Order right now, which inform your rules, to say, I appeal, and ask for the board to have a vote. So the appeal language that I'm using is pertaining only to the point of order.
And you're also talking that the appeal has a vote?
It is a board vote.
If you follow it through the process.
It is a board vote, correct.
Okay.
And as to, I think, the other question I heard in there, if someone were to be removed, whether it's a member of the public or an official, yes, you, you may consider in your process, how would you go about resolving that if there's a challenge? It would be difficult, as you correctly suggest, to say, we're going to remove someone for XYZ reason and remove them, and then what? How do we move forward? That would be a policy decision for you all to, to make. You could decide whether you wish to consider an appeal in the heat of the moment or if you wish to wait until the next meeting. Because certainly removal of an individual doesn't necessarily mean they can't come back to the next meeting.
Oh, no, that's, because here it says, in, in this particular one, next to the last sentence, it will say, may order the person from the meeting, which means obviously that-
The single meeting.
The single meeting-
Correct.
Can be out, which doesn't mean that they don't come back, which, that's given. It just means for that particular meeting-
Correct.
That disorderly person is done. Okay. I'm not so sure. I mean, I understand what you're saying with regards to a double standard, which it is a double standard. You have one for the public and one for the elected official. I'm not so sure. That one's gonna take a little thought on my process to be able to work that through because, just because someone's elected doesn't put them on a higher standard. And so when you have two, two avenues to go to, I'd have to think on that one. Would it be possible to write something up and then we could look at it and dissect it and figure out?
As in a proposed rule?
In a proposed rule.
Certainly, we could do that.
Because actually, I, this rule itself, to me, sounds sufficient. But if you're thinking that there's something else out there that would better this rule, then obviously, that's the whole point. You not only update, you know, but we don't necessarily look at changing unless there's something that needs to be changed.
Correct. And I, I raise it, Madam Supervisor, only because I think there was a question of, of-
Oh, sure.
Process before, and I, and my understanding, as you've been walking through all of these rules with great care, is that we are trying to clean up our processes and make sure we all know what they are. Whether-
Right.
You have not made any decisions yet about board rule changes, because that's not where we are. We're just in the brainstorming process. So this is us offering that up to the board.
Okay.
What standards you wish to apply. As I said, at a minimum, we know the law in terms of what the standard is for when a member of the public can be removed, and it is an extraordinarily high standard.
Sure.
It is, and it should be, as I explained, it should be. And so the question will be, how do you feel about that standard as it relates to board officials? Do you want a different standard? I'm not recommending anything. I just want you to know, think about both of those things.
So in, in the process of you writing something out, you would actually have a two path or two standards. You would have the standard for public and standard for like elected official. Is that correct or not?
I can bring that forward, yes.
Well, but that's, I think that's what you were saying. I'm the only one here, so keep going, guys.
No.
Anything? Okay.
That sounds like a good plan.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it, it makes sense to look at it.
Great. We'll do those things. I, I mentioned three things. I'll give you sample language. We'll pull it from a variety of sources, so if, if there are options that you want to play with or tinker with, you'll have them before you.
Would you please do that? How do I say this? I would prefer that, as Joe has used his private, my other email, which is very common, it's listed, you know, with the board or always has been. I've always had two emails. But, you know, for me, that would be a better place for it to be, would be than Gmail. So I'll, I'll get it to you.
Okay.
So that you'll have it, and then we won't have this, I don't know what you're talking about kind of thing.
Okay.
But no, I appreciate that.
We typically, I'll, I'll just say, Madam Supervisor, I typically stick to the township emails because I, of course, what we say matters to you. It's your board privilege and I want to make sure I'm managing that, but I understand the request.
Okay, thank you.
Marie?
Yes.
Could I ask one more question?
Yep, and pertaining to this? Sure, go ahead.
There was also some comments about committee of the whole. Will that request include sample language there? Or was your recommendation to strike that language in its entirety?
No, that's not in this one. That's not.
It's in the-
Yeah, it's in the suggestions, but it's not, we're not there yet.
It's in her legal opinion.
Oh.
Um, I, we addressed the committee of the whole because that was a question also that had come up around that same time, and I think it's my duty to help you all understand what your options are. We were clarifying what your, your board rules say, what your options are under that. I can bring that forward again when I, when I get everything to you, so that everyone has it in front of them.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. Okay. All right, that was good. Thank you, guys.
Ma'am Chair?
Oh, yes.
It's 6:00.
Oh, my God, it is 6:00 after 6:00. Five minutes. Five minutes, guys. Sorry about that. We'll stop at public statements. Thank you for writing. She always keeps good notes on that.
Oh, wait, we gotta do an adjournment.
So we do have to do an official roll call adjournment. Oh, we need a second. I'll second.
I'm sorry.
Joe made the motion.
So we're not gonna do public statements?
No, that's where we'll stop at.
Okay, and then you're gonna do the second?
Yep.
Okay.
And that would be 6.4.
Correct.
Mr. Benzy?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Chandler, yes. Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so everybody knows it's what, two minutes after 6:00? So get back here 10 minutes after. Would that be too late? That work? I don't see any shaking heads, so, okay. We need a bobblehead. Everybody has to have a bobblehead. Yep, well, it'll be 10 minutes after 6:00, which gives you seven minutes, eight minutes? Sad, Judy, Judy's always too long. She's- God, I got the kitchen sink in here.